Well, then I think we should jump right into the continuation of the public hearing of 33 Skating Pond Road, amendment to RGFR A site plan approval. As long as you can be seen by the camera and forward on it, maybe you can push it up against the wall, that'll do it. Then we'll see what we're talking about.
Do you have the prior plan as well that you can show us?
I don't have that one with me, I don't know if it's in or not.
It's not with help.
The front, the front plan is the same as last time.
So, as discussed kind of in our, in our last meeting, my name's Steven Lides from Weston-Lenskip and Tree.
And Jonathan White were both representing here on behalf of Adrian and Zach Ryan.
So, as we left off in our last meeting, we kind of came to the conclusion with the board that this is really kind of two separate projects, the front and the rear. So, what I did is I've expanded that to the front and, and the rear in two separate things. And as we discussed with, with Kim's comments on the phone connection that we had and whatnot, is that we really didn't have all that much concerns last time in terms of the front. Everything looked relatively good. We were really focusing on our last meeting on the rear area. So, but again, taking back into the front, again, Skating Pond Road does that 90-degree hook right through here, our driveway is here, this is the outline of the front of the house, just blew this up on a 10 scale so it was a little easier to read than other plans was a little intense to read. To beef up the screening in the front is to add an understory of taller rhododendrons on this side of the driveway and also add five large hemlocks into this zone here. Clearing out some of the trees that Kim and I identified on the sidewalk a few months back and reworking the, the lower no disturb area here. And also moving the existing birches that are on this corner where these hemlocks are proposed to be into this zone, into the lower zone of the tree well. Not changing any of the grating here other than removing the water wells of the trees and then getting the existing trees right off of the house as they were planted too close as we looked at on the sidewalk. As we walked up the front walkway through here, then everything was really crowded.
So, are the trees to be removed shown exiled?
They are through here. The other ones that are shown here are viable transplant into the rear to screen us from perry lane, and that's shown on the back. So, again, not, not much, no changes to the front plan at all as we, comments were received last time, we felt we were all comfortable with it. And again, two, really two projects in one here, so. Any comments on that or we get back to it?
Well, the, the, the one thing last time in the front we discussed a couple of times is, is originally the proposal was for a gate. The concern was with that 90-degree turn, a lot of cars were coming straight.
Yeah, right in, right in the highway.
In the driveway, that one happened while you were there.
Yes.
And the board made it clear that it really did not look favorably upon the gate. So, what we did is came in with a proposal for pillars and increasing, and increasing the size of the rubble strip. And last time, I don't, I don't believe we ever even discussed that last time. So, that was, we discussed everything else in the front and, you know, I think the front was pretty well agreed upon last time, but we never got to those two.
You buy a rubble strip, you need a cobblestone.
That's right. So, increasing, there's already a current one out there that's roughly 30 inches wide, about three stripes of cobblestones, increasing it to an additional six feet to give it that definition at the paved edge of the road. And then to add the, the stone columns 35 feet into the driveway as well as a marker.
So, can you describe what those columns are?
I sent, that's a picture of those and they're, as we described last time in our meeting, they're New England stone pillars, masonry pillars, 30 inches square, just under five feet tall.
And light?
And that there is, not, no change to the lighting at all in the front, at all.
There's no lights on the pillars, is what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay. I don't have a problem with the cobblestone strip, but five foot high stone pillars that are, what are they, 30 square?
30 and square.
Yeah, 30 and square.
And the 35 feet back, right?
35 feet back.
So, that's what seems to be like.
But the goal is to prevent people from.
It's a real visual identifier that.
Yeah, we know what the goal is.
And I think one of the suggestions was changing the angle of the driveway, wasn't it?
It's really hard to accomplish with the way that the, this all lines up if we're in the way that our lot lines working here too, to, to put any kind of chicane action into it in relatively short distance, given the sunken tree well area.
Adrian was saying I already have a problem with getting snow on there.
Yeah.
It just seems strange to have them so far back. I mean, if people are going to drive in, they're going to drive right in.
We'd rather have farther forward, but we just assumed you didn't want them.
Yeah, well, I don't want them, I don't think I want them at all.
The thing is, I think that the cobblestone strip would be effective at stopping people because not only can you readily see it before you drive in, you can feel it. So, I think that makes sense and it's fairly subtle.
A deeper highlighter.
Yeah. If, yeah, right, right. If you felt the need to have some kind of a vertical marker which is, Sue said, "I'm not convinced that we do any good that far in," then what about something like a granite post that's, you know, not as big and plain?
A bollard.
Yeah, well, you know, like they're about a foot in, a foot square and a.
Three feet tall.
Three feet tall instead of something almost five feet tall.
Yep.
Two and a half feet square.
Yep.
With the purpose of delineating the driveway, it's not a continuous of the road.
Right. Again, I'm not so sure that it's going to be that effective 30 something feet in, but we don't.
No, I think that's, that's absolutely reasonable, yeah.
You know, if we did the bollard and we're calling it a bollard, if we did that, much less of both height and width, could we push it even a little further forward?
I really wouldn't agree with that because I think 35 feet is like, you're not going to see it until you're in there.
These would be like a rough granite.
That's right.
You know, you'd see them, they're very rustic looking, yeah.
And not even that bright white granite, more of a toned down.
Yeah, and they're.
Darker color.
And I wouldn't feel as bad if they were a little bit closer to the edge.
Like maybe kind of where the, where are they proposed to be right now?
Right where these boxes are right here.
And I was thinking maybe the little forts like near the beginning of the hemlock tree?
I probably didn't hear that.
With that?
Yeah. So, then put them about roughly 20 feet in off the paved edge of the road.
That's it, if you're talking.
About adding six feet to.
To the rubble strip.
To the rubble strip, that'll make it just like eight and a half feet.
Yeah.
You know, and so if, if it's just inside from that eight and a half feet, does that make sense?
You mean like putting 10 to 12 feet in from the edge of the driveway and this big rubble strip? Yeah, it just seems to me to be useless to put the 35 feet back because, I mean, never will there be massive things that no one's going to.
That was our original gate position, so we came off that and we left the, the columns in there or the piers in there, same position, so. But if we put those in 12 by 12, 30 inches, 36 inches tall, 15 feet off the paved edge.
So, we're saying 15 feet?
I think it's once you're on the rubble strip and then you have the visual vertical.
So, where would 15 feet be?
Right there where that, right here.
And, and David is suggesting maybe.
I'm suggesting closer to the rubble city.
Okay.
So, you're saying right at the end, right?
So, at the finish of the rubble strip then, it could just play with right at the end.
I think that would look better, wouldn't it?
Yes and no, I mean, it depends on how visible you want it from the road, but at least it would be right on the edge of the property, so, I don't know.
And a, a foot diameter, that seems big, but.
That is big.
What size are these things usually?
Well, a typical mailbox post itself or a granite light pole itself are seven by seven inch.
I'm just thinking of the granite polish.
Absolutely 12 by 12, yeah.
Really?
I didn't know if they were nine or.
Put those on a walnut street, the same thing, they're that size, yeah.
I kind of like aimed toward the, a little bit smaller, about seven, six or seven inches.
Also the color too really helps.
Right.
Because if you got one on either side, you know, just inside from the.
From the strip.
From the strip and that, you know, presumably gray or something, people will see it.
I think they also look silly if they're too slender, so.
They, they, they can get hit, they get knocked, they actually break.
Well, yeah, I was going to say you can actually bash the edge of the driveway.
There's exactly the size of the ones when you go up through the Brooks School, that when you walk through, when you drive up to Brooks School on the left side of school street, the ones that have the pipe rail across it.
Those are huge.
No, those are about 12 inch square.
Really?
And they're only, they're only about three feet tall.
Those are big, old conkers.
Nope, they're, they're this big, three feet tall.
Yeah, they're, they're big.
Okay, so what do we?
But they're classic.
One, one thing I will add is, I realize this is a private road, but the rubble strip should be kept off of the public way or private way.
It is, it is.
Because.
It's all on our property.
If DPW for whatever reason has to plow this.
DPW doesn't plow this, Melon does sometimes.
Right, but occasionally there may be a situation that DPW likes to.
Should absolutely.
Yeah, it's always on our private, right inside the lot line that way.
Out of the three feet.
Probably fire.
12 inch, 12 inches, very big.
Certainly.
Three feet, but.
To beat the work of.
Nine inches.
Our neighbor has one, so I need it less mass. He's not going to like the ones at Brooks School, those are great big.
How about nine inches, which is a little bigger than this?
Yeah.
How about nine inches square? A little light still.
Yeah, but if we're talking big school.
Those are only 12 inches.
I know, and they're massive.
But they're.
They're massive.
They're nice.
Yeah, well, they're nice, they're nice.
They're really nice.
It's a much bigger building behind you too.
Exactly.
Do those come in standard sizes or do you get?
Do they weigh in?
Uh, not one. It's whatever I order, so.
So, we'll get nine, we'll get nine inches.
Yeah.
10. You okay with 10?
Can we go back to another issue just for a second? You still use the word tree well, and I just wanted to hear.
Oh, it's when these trees are removed through here, it's just the, the way that the, the water wells are constructed around the trees, just to smooth the grade out through there.
Right, but what I'm hearing.
Don't have this mobile field through there.
Right, well, the one that I remember is the one adjacent to the driveway, right?
Oh, this is the sunken, the sunken no disturb area.
Right, exactly, but there are trees in other which are being said adjacent to that, to the driveway, extended, right?
Slightly.
There's a small amendment, so there's a small.
It's any wall?
On the plans that I saw, that it still said tree well, and what I imagine with a tree well, in other words, is it goes around the entire.
This has existed. We're not changing it at all, we're not changing the floor of this area.
He's talking about the tree well.
Do you have a preference of one or two?
We're not changing the floor of that at all, its footprint.
So, what would, what is it going to look like, is my question, on one side, in other words, you have.
Well, we, we had the issue of, of to close the proximity of the asphalt, right?
We're building that out.
Yeah, it, it's just to relay the stones in there, to have them act better as a battered rip wrap.
Or like a rip wrap.
That's right, it's a battered rip wrap.
Right, so, so is, is it, is it retaining the earth that's there?
Containing the driveway.
Right, it's there.
It's elevation distance.
Okay, and then, but the tree is then sitting, in other words, on the opposite side. What I imagine is a tree, tree well is literally like around the tree.
No, no. The, the definition of this line of the existing wall that's there is not changing.
Okay.
So, I think it's a good point, probably proposed tree well is misnomered because one, it's already there, it's probably not your typical tree well.
Right.
Is there a better word we can put on that?
Well, it had both, it had the rip wrap wall and the tree well.
Yeah, because that, that's being just reworked through this one section in the corner.
Right.
Just don't call it a tree well, rip wrap along the shoulder of the driveway.
Sue had the thought about.
Yeah, so getting back to the pillar, the post, we've changed our mind because Kim reminded us that the planning board really just allows one typically, and so we were thinking one 12-foot.
12-foot.
12 inches one, and maybe you would put it, and you'd put it at the end of the rubble strip, maybe on this side, because here.
Remember the best business.
Well, I have an existing light pole, so. I have an existing light pole here, so I would put it on that opposite side, yes.
And it's also more visible because you don't have plantings.
Yes.
And you could put the number of the street there.
Right on it, yeah.
So, and you could, like I said, make it 12 inches square, put it right at the end.
And now let's talk about height.
36 inches.
12 inches square, beveled top.
Okay.
Busham and sides.
Busham, is that like rough, is that a rough finish?
Yes.
We have a consensus on that.
Okay. And before you go on, could you just briefly read or just give us a synopsis of what each of those notes are?
Uh, this is talking about removing the, the trees that were, we identified in the lower tree well to accommodate the birches moving into that location, which are being transplanted from the hemlock area here, the new hemlock area here. Rebuild the existing tree well and build a rip wrap wall to better retain the driveway, that's just through this short section here that we just spoke about here. I'll probably just end up removing this note here, proposed tree well, this may have been actually original and just showed up from the 2006 decision. There's cobblestone edging around the driveway, which is just one single cobblestone on edge, raised an inch and a half above the asphalt. Transplanting the, the birches into the, the lower tree well, adding the, adding some other lower shrubs, these are transplanted shrubs from this side to this side, which are andromedas, adding in the rhododendrons, mixing other heights in there together. These are six foot, wants to get those in that understory underneath the existing hemlocks through this corner, and then transplanting the remainder of these trees to the rear that are viable.
The ones that are not viable, that are coming down?
It's going to be a field call.
A field call.
I'm not going to waste the client's money, I'm not going to move something if it's not viable.
What's going on here?
So, at the, at the right time here, which I hope is late fall or early spring, we'll be moving those.
The hemlocks will get huge.
Do you have anything else to add, Jim?
That's the point.
So, that's speaking of the front.
That's their point.
Any changes in lighting?
Not at all.
Okay, so are we finished with the front?
Yeah.
So, to the rear, as suggested and discussed, one of the main topics of the rear, uh, three main topics of the rear last time was our wish, desire to move the approved limit line. We're not going to move the approved limit line. We are not going to move the shed. As Mr. Oppenheimer discussed, why don't we try to move the wall to gain a little more lower yard, if you will, in the rear, move the wall further back to the approved limit line, don't move the shed, get the attenuation around the generator, and if, we had a big blank space in before, and Roy was, Kim were keying into that last time, and now we have a woodland understory through here, Kim has commented on our planting plan through, through this center section here where we were all walking, that one day would really flip this trigger of the rear here, so.
Why does it still look like there are no?
Well, it's, it's just the way the call out works through here is that the larger plants, in a typical landscape plan, the larger plants are shown, if you will, to look through this vista, if you will, the finished mature understory is going to do kind of this, kind of a saddle, where, where we can actually still enjoy our ledge outcropping through here, through the understory of the canopy trees in the rear. But, but there's at least, oh, probably there's probably 160 plants that are in this zone through here, they're just all being small, but again, still a woodland forest floor.
And there were no trees there before that were cut down?
Only pine saplings and other chokecherrys and other volunteers that were in that zone. But again, it's all of our transplants.
Pretty thick in that line, I tripped over.
That were this big.
Yeah.
All of our transplants, all of our transplants from the front, working back through here behind the shed and to help us have a perry lane that's over here, and then again, to rise it back up and plant off the end of the wall and around the generator, help hide it from the house as well.
That is a bell task, Jim.
So, my concern with that area, which I think I expressed before last time, is that I, this was a forest and we don't, I didn't see and I don't think any of us saw what looked like before, but we know there's been some clearing in there. My concern was I wanted it to be allowed to transition back into a healthy forest ecosystem and in order to do that, I thought there needed to be some variation of understory shrubs brought back in, and that's what I'm seeing here. I'm actually pretty happy with the variety and quantity of shrubs that they've put back in. Steve, the, that center part where it looks like there isn't anything, is that ground cover?
Well, it's understory with ferns, low bush, blueberry, rousa aromatica, bunch berries, Solomon seal, wintergreen, and the floor, the floor of it will start every, all of this area is pine sprout mulch.
Yeah, so that was.
Which is pine needles.
Our other question, so what they're doing is allowing a native or natural sort of condition to be reinstated there by putting in the appropriate species now, and it will, you know, come together.
Are they allowed to remove trees when they?
We don't need to.
No, no, but as, as an understory with now light coming in, Steve's point is that you're going to get pine saplings.
Right.
And you're going to get oak saplings, which are wonderful, that's kind of what we were thinking of, but I'm not sure it's, the homeowner is going to be happy with that because as you said, they were interested in seeing their ledge back there, but in the course of time, maybe about 10 years, as you know.
The woods is coming back in, absolutely.
Right, so that has to be written in this decision, that this is just to help the reestablishment.
It's mitigation.
It's still, it's still a limited work, this, the limited work is.
Yeah, but this line is still here.
Right. Yes, but that hasn't seemed to work in the past with this particular property, so.
Oh, we know, yeah.
Yeah, but, well, but maybe the next person won't because.
That's not on my hands.
I know.
But the decision will be in place, of course.
That would be the due diligence of the company.
Absolutely.
Explain it.
Will you post a bond that they'll behave, as opposed to something for the life of the property?
Of course.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
No, but anyways.
This is just the midpoint to establish.
Right, right.
And to keep the invasives.
To keep the invasives out.
Yes, exactly.
Right, but that the pine saplings and oak saplings and maple saplings will not be.
And birch saplings and whoever's going to be happy in this will do their thing. And we already have that same thing on the side of property with conservation, we have a full restoration area down through the pond head. We can't do anything other than maintain the floor to help the plants that are in that restoration area.
On real estate, I was almost thinking that we almost have to have a continuously augmented list of all the properties in town that are subject to site plan approval. Brokers will all have it, and, you know, and then just, then there's even less excuse to not know that this is a, this particular property.
Well, ones which have been before the board that have, have that.
Yeah, he says protect the property with, with conditions.
Easy to do, but then there's other properties that come in that then become part of.
You know, Sue, that's a, that's a really interesting question.
Once you start it, and then you can easily augment it.
And Joe Layden, actually before he left, whatever we're going to say, had actually asked me a question to, and we would certainly be willing to give us the conditions, is what I do with conservation, which when I'm under a restoration order or a mitigation order with conservation, I have to produce every six months for conservation, plant health reports.
Wow.
Okay, that gets submitted, goes in the file, and I'm mostly doing pictures and giving Michelle my, my updates on things, and I think when we're talking about intensity of planting like this, that the board could actually do the same thing when we're doing, it doesn't matter whether this is a mitigation or restoration, just a full site plan review, brand new or not. Because Joe and I, I actually, I think we started that conversation about that, because we look at other things like, you know, Highland Meadows, take an example, off right off the side of Highland Street, you look in the woods, they plant the tree, it dies, I'd never see it go back, but it's.
This is a good conversation now, but let's stay on.
Yes, same project.
But because we got our time, we're going to do some stuff, so.
So, that's where we are in the back with, with the wall again, not, not moving the limit line at all. The attenuation of the generator is actually described in this sheet, which I actually got out of the file from 36 Walnut, most recently approved by the board, where it's a double-sided 54-inch-high board fence with two-inch sound foam on the interior, fully wrapping the whole generator. And it's, actually, that, that one on Walnut is painted black, we're going to do the same thing.
Well, the important part, of course, is the decibel.
Absolutely, yep, and this, this does mean it, it did mean it's a requirement.
I would like to adjust that. There's a number of property owners recently come to me and their decibel level is, the ambient decibel level is higher than what the board wants. It's in the 60, 70 range when the, and when the generator goes on, it doesn't increase, but the ambient level is 60, 70.
So, these are, these are homeowners here, the mass turnpike or 128?
No, these are, these are people who, you know, are in various locations in town like Boston Post Road.
Okay, so hide that from noise.
So, we should bring this up as a piece with the full board, again, let's stick on this property.
I did a measurement, the DBA reading right here, property line, in parts of this generator, ambient noise, 9:30 in the morning about Tuesday, and I had 52 right there.
Before the sand attenuation?
No, I had just 52.
Just 52.
Just standing there with the DBA meter. Well, I had 52 there.
Wait, are these all?
A robin chirped in a tree and it went to 58.
Are these the ones?
No, this was a real, I powered a generator guy.
Okay.
A robin chirped in a tree and went to 58, 60, and it was about 60 feet away from me.
So, again.
That's interesting.
Maybe it's standard that we should read that as a board, but we're not going to do it right now.
Brookline does 60.
But we're not going to do it right now.
Understood.
Are there any other questions for this?
No, we, I was just interested in what the mulch would be in the meantime until it grew up, and we, you know, heard it was going to be pine, you know, strawberries, yeah.
So, where do we act with this?
Well, I think it's a good idea about including in the conditions, the idea of the, on the condition.
Yeah, plant health report for two years, I do it every six months, Tuesday, October, and June, is my normal time that I can submit those to conservation. And that gives the board a sense without expecting of what's going on over there.
So, we could expect in two years, one of the pictures will show a little pine tree popping out.
I would hope so.
So, are we good with this now?
Yeah, I am.
All right, so we need to continue this to date certain that we vote on it?
Uh, two weeks. We can probably do it at 9:45 on October 15th at 9:45.
So, I'll make an update to this plan to show in the single bollard, take the columns off and show the single bollard.
And then I'll update the draft.
Just strike the tree well.
Understood, yeah, I'll strike that, because this, this highlight, that doesn't help.
Thank you.
That's real significant.
You okay? Do it work? Good. Okay. We had a continuation of, next, we have a continuation of the public hearing for 255 Mary Street, flexible subdivision. Are you involved with that too?
Yeah.
Ron, I have to whisper, it's on record.
This is a mic. Oh, you can't start yet. I'll be out of sync too. I'll be in. I'll be out of the state too, I'll be in the room.
Well, with this, keep it anything.
Work a chair out of there?
Four, four, one, one. Four, four, one, one. Yeah.
And the next one.
Four, four, one, Glen Road will be, Willis, yes. Okay.
So we're not discussing.
So not discussing it all, because. Um, yeah, you can discuss that, but.
It's not happening.
Continue the hearing. Well, that's unfortunate, because we can have an hour. We'll be doing a lot of research.
Just make sure that we put it in my.
Get to read it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So there's no new information, I'm typically back there, and the plan is continued, there's no growth.
I shouldn't be.
What I wanna do is go over the changes that you're proposing, and there are many of them, so, um, she might be able to talk about trees, pictures, western, I think she's fine with that, so. She probably be better than that. At the daughter's school, she's all right.
I was like, she's questioning that, so.
What, or what's going on with metalwork?
It's no, nothing new from my last comments.
From the last comments. So she can go.
What about this one?
There's no new information.
Okay. I'm gonna listen. I'm gonna listen.
All right, um, we still have a minute or so before this.
I heard it second hand from Mark, are we okay on four forty-one Glen, it's a medical permit?
Um, yeah, I just got something, hopefully, a picture. And I contacted him as soon as I was. Pardon? Oh, yes, he will.
We have about a minute and a half before it's actually the posted time for the hearing, so that's why we're cooling our heels, but we're glad you're all here. I need to come to your senses.
No, there was an email that was sent, um, the generation of the project.
This one?
No, 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 um, emails that were sent from Jane Bybee on the project, I did not make copies, I've, I've got it here.
So, uh, something interesting, three things that we've learned.
Um, extensive. You can read it, you can read it.
Sure, sure, sure.
No, we need to. We could read it.